I would like to call to order the Albany City Council meeting for July 16th, 2018. Please join Councilmember Maz in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the blood on which it stands, congregation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please? Sorry.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Pilch.
Present.
Vice Mayor Nason.
President.
Mayor McQuaid.
Present. And our first item of business tonight is ceremonial matters. We have a certificate of recognition to Jennifer Raddix-Johnson. Are you here? Can we shift the agenda and put that a little bit later? Thank you. Okay, report on action taken in closed session. Council gave direction to staff. Consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the City Council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or member of the audience requests removal of the items from the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item? I'm pulling 5.7. 5. Michael, anybody? Anything?
5.6.
6. Rochelle? Any member of the public wish to pull an item? Seeing no one, 5.5, please. Is that you?
Yeah, that's the ordinance amending the section 9. 10, stopping, standing, and parking. And it's in regards to the whether or not cars can stop in an electric charging station. And the only reason I pulled this is I became aware this last week of a constituent who has had issues about parking over their sidewalk in order to charge their electric car. And it occurs to me, and this is just a little unrelated to this ordinance, but it occurs to me that as we get more electric cars in the city of Albany, we're sort of endangering to having a lot of wires being laid across sidewalks. So we might want to start looking at how we might remediate this in the future for redoing our sidewalks. Perhaps we should be talking about at least laying an empty conduit underneath the new sidewalk so people can later on pull a wire through to set up a charging station. But, you know, the more I was thinking about this, there could be issues about, could you put a charger on the strip between the street and the sidewalk? That's usually owned by the city. How would that work? Anyway, it is something that I think we should keep track of going forward.
I know, to just jump on that, there's at least one on Ordway that's, charging station is in the strip.
Yeah.
Okay, but good points.
Yeah.
All right, 5.6, Nick?
I just want to note, just want to thank staff for incorporating the feedback of Mr. Fields and say that I think that that was, I appreciate the corrections to make the ordinance more, better comply with the state code. So, thanks.
Okay, and, I'll pull 5.7. I just wanted to remind everybody that this is partially funded by SB 1 money. Want to, so I'm wondering if we can get some of those big giant signs that say, paid for through SB 1 money?
Yes.
And really, we really need to push this. And I think that we received an email this morning from Brian Martin regarding sidewalks, the same thing, if we could do that.
I had also a couple of questions about this. One was a general question about the liability of the contractors who are doing the work, either on the streets or the sidewalks. Again, a constituent approached me about damage to their car from concrete that was being splashed out of a sidewalk situation. Could you just give a quick rundown of how, if somebody has that happen to them, either from the sidewalk or the road repairs, what, how did they, what should they do?
Okay, so there's two things. We're going to get into some detail on the resurfacing project, but to answer your question about the liability, what we've, and we came up on this on a couple of occasions on the Marin undergrounding, what we've encouraged people to do if they have issues and suspect a contractor has caused damage, we want them to submit a claim to the city. And then what we'll do is in turn forward that to the contractor and they have insurance that will take care of it.
And just to guess, how long would that process conceivably take for somebody?
I imagine it's pretty quick. The ones that we did have on Marin, Buchanan, the contractor worked directly with the other party to resolve the issues.
Okay. And then, one other question. East Bay Mud has been doing a whole lot of repiping all over the city, and so I'm sure you're quite aware where they're doing that, and this will be coordinated with the improvements that we're proceeding with. But will the timelines all work out? I mean, there's, it is a question on a number of people's minds.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the challenges and really one of the factors that went into the project that we have today, and we'll get into that a little bit.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions as well. I don't know if you wanted to speak to the signage that was mentioned. And also, I believe you were going to speak to the, speak to a letter that we'd received as well about this item. And I wanted to also thank you for including a very detailed report about which streets are going to get exactly which treatment. That was very helpful. And my question would be, is, do we have a schedule for, and kind of aligns with the email received about this, do we have a schedule for pothole filling and kind of temporary repairs?
Well, we'll get into a little bit of all of that. Okay, so, what we wanted this item pulled from consent to, in response to a number of questions from the public, and I think the fundamental question, underlying question is, why are we doing this project now? And you'll get into that. And our intent here today is to just provide a little bit of context for our decision-making process so that as you deliberate on approving this project, you can see it in the work that's in process and, as well as the work that's right behind it. So there's a lot of things going on in here. Let me go to the next slide. So, the first project we have going on, and this is the Evelyn repaving project, and this is between Garfield and Portland. This is a, our first SB 1 funded project, and this, if you recall, came to council for approval in the last meeting in June. And we're issuing a notice to proceed for construction later this month, and so that will be well underway, and we will post signs so everyone will know that this is an SB 1 funded project. And then our 2018 project, which is the project before you tonight, is a combination of base repair and slurry sealing. And then we've also taken the remaining elements of the ATP project. And if you recall, this was that signage and striping project that was partially done and was completed, the design was completed in 2014, 2015, and has been kind of done piecemeal to this point. And we're just wanting to get it out there and get it complete. And our logic behind doing this, this work is, one, we were concerned about missing a construction window. As you know, with staff turnover and ramping up, we didn't initiate a paving project last year, and with completing the CIP, we're concerned about being in that same situation again right now. And we had a number of things that we had to coordinate with, the, our own sewer work that's in design and in construction, the East Bay Mud work, and a number of things that we, so we wanted a project that we, we knew was meaningful, that we could complete and get out this, this construction window. And this project, which is the slurry seal and base repair, has a lower level of design needed to get it out there. So we chose this as, as the project to do this year because we can get it out quickly, it's meaningful, and Robert will get into some of the details on that. And then we can follow up with larger projects that do more of the base repair, or not base repair, rehabilitation work. And we have that scheduled. We're actually designing the Washington rehabilitation project, and this will go from San Pablo up to Key Route, which is all the key issues for here. And our intent is to continue with, that's under design right now, and our intent is to bring it to council for requests for bids, for a call for bids in December, or November, December, with the idea that we'll go out to bid and begin construction early part of 2019 with the intention of being completed before June 30th. And that's, again, an SB 1 funded project, so we want to have that done before our deadline of, for this funding deadline in June 30th. So that's, that's going to be right on the heels of this project. And then, we also just completed the CIP, and we have a fair amount of resources lined out in the plan, including a fair amount in our, from carryforward from last fiscal year and our current, totaling close to $5 million. So we really want to plan out the street sections that we'll be doing over the next five years and bring it to first traffic and safety, and then council for sort of an overall blessing of the plan, so everyone will know what we're doing. But again, there's a lot of moving parts, and we're trying to push a number of things forward, and we felt that this is the, the project before you is a nice balance between a meaningful project that we can get done now and then follow it with some of the other projects that have a longer time horizon. So I'm going to turn it to Robert now to kind of give some more of the technical details.
Thank you. So this graph that is behind me is pretty busy, so I'm going to walk through it because it gives a lot of good information about how we approach not just a particular project, but how we approach programmatically rehabilitating city streets. So this is a pavement life cycle, so this kind of shows the typical pavement lifecycle that we would see, we would expect to see in a city street. The top left is essentially when a new street goes in. You've got the best condition you're going to expect. A PCI is on a scale of zero to 100, so that's an excellent condition. You can expect a pavement section to last about 20 years. At the end of that, you're going to have a PCI of zero. So the red part of this is essentially the expected curve of degradation. So you can see that it's an S curve, so it's fairly predictable in its slope. And the first three quarters of a pavement life, you can enjoy a fairly small and predictable degradation. During that time, you can see the yellow circle, we have the 2018 thing circle there, but during that time, you could expect to invest in and, and continue a good life cycle by investing early into that pavement section. So what you want to do is you want to invest early and often in those pavement sections to keep them on the top part of that curve. You're going to experience the precipitous drop at that inflection point somewhere around 50 PSI, excuse me, PSI, 50 PCI as it drops down and your expenses significantly increase. That's when you're talking about milling out pavement that's failed, removing a good section of the base repair, and having to go all the way down into what they call reconstruction. So we do have a fair amount of streets in Albany that demand reconstruction. So we're not ignoring it, but we really need a two-pronged approach. Staff needs to both maintain the investments that the city has already put into streets, and that's really in the top half of the curve. We want to make sure that the streets that are in good repair now remain in good repair. So we need to reinvest in those streets and bring them back up to essentially a new or fairly new condition. And that's where really slurry seal comes in. The value that Mark refers to is that you can invest a lot, and you can cover a lot of streets simply with a small, a fairly thin slurry seal, as long as you don't have significant base failures. And in areas like Washington Avenue, like Dartmouth, like Solano, like a lot of the streets on the east side of the BART tracks where the volumes are low, you don't see a lot of cars driving through there, but you can see that there's base failures, that's when you get into these areas where it's, where you're dropping down the, this slope into these areas where it demands additional repairs. So what we're doing here is, we've identified Evelyn, which Mark talked about, which is one of the streets that has passed this inflection point. Most all of Evelyn has already been rehabilitated, and this one block has not, so we identified that block for rehabilitation, for melon overlay, and for significant base repair. And then we also identified Washington as also being in that area. So we place these circles here based on the 2015 PCI index. So these are relatively recent numbers. We can expect that the PCI after they're done is going to be reflected in a better PCI. But that's essentially our strategy, is a two-pronged approach. One is to maintain the investments that we've already put into the streets that are in good condition and bring them up to a very good condition, and then take those streets, identify those streets that are critical, that have base repairs, that, rather than going into and trying to spot all of these base repairs, once it gets past that inflection point, you do a complete reconstruction, or you do a big melon overlay, and bring it back up to a good condition. So this particular project, I'll go through the, you've seen this map before, this is the map that was provided in your packet, but it basically, we have essentially four categories. We've got streets that are identified simply to do slurry seals. We've got streets that will do, can you guys see, can you guys see this?
We have it here.
No, that's okay. Don't worry about it. So, we've got streets that have both ATP and slurry seals. We have streets that have ATP and signage, and then we have streets that have signage only. So depending on what elements were anticipated or were placed between 2014 and today, we'll basically bring up to speed all of the elements of the ATP program. And then on top of that, we're going to cover a significant portion of these streets with slurry seal. Our strategy to talk to Councilman Maz's point is, we laid out Solano Avenue as a demarcation and tried to stay above Solano Avenue as best we could, because East Bay Mud's work significantly is below Solano Avenue. They're doing a lot of their work on Evelyn, Nielsen, Albany Terrace and that area, and going down Evelyn down to the Berkeley border. So we told the consultant we wanted to focus on areas above Solano, and then in later, later design packages, we'll be able to go down and below Solano and identify priority streets in that area. So just some of the data, so you guys know what you're, what you're considering today. 16 resurfaced streets, that's for slurry seal and base repairs. Base repairs are 23,000 square feet. Surface treatments primarily are going to be slurry seal, which is 78,000, and rubberized cage seal, which is about 5,000 square feet. Rubberized cage seal is really like, it's recycled tires where you have a little, little beaded elements, and it's useful if you have a little, if you need a little bit more care, if it's further down on that curve, it can, it could add more life to it, and it's, it's well-priced. It's a good investment for, for, for streets that have degraded a little bit further. Striping and signage on 12 streets, concrete repairs, which is curb and gutter. So as we're doing these streets, we've identified areas of curb and gutter that are failing, that our maintenance crews, maybe it's a little too significant for them to go out and do all of these. So as we're doing slurry seals, we're going to be identifying those areas that the contractor will also repair curb and gutter. And the engineer's estimate we have here is $950,000. Since this slide was put together, since we, since we presented this traffic and safety, we've gotten a little bit of feedback from the city of Berkeley. We're, we're working with them, they have a project that is going to go, be going through, through the city, and so we're working on details of that project as well. But this is essentially the design package that, as Mark said, we put together to take advantage of this construction window, and then on the heels of this, right afterwards, we'll be, we'll be doing the design elements for the Washington Avenue improvements. Questions?
So I do have a question now. So if we're not doing Washington until next year, as far as the street part, are we still planning to do signage on the street now? I'm confused, sorry.
Well, we can do signage, and we can even do striping. Once you have the striping contractor out and they're doing 12 striping and signage streets, it really isn't too much of an investment to have them continue and do those stripings. When we put 12 streets on there and we described the package, we were anticipating that Washington would be 12 months in advance, 12 months out. So we would have all of that enjoyment of having the striping in place with the signage. It's, it's easier to have the striping and signage in one package rather than to parse it out across other packages, so we are going to include it here.
But will it have to be redone?
Parts of it will, the signage is in place.
Robert, I think the Washington is signage only, that won't need to be redone.
Okay, thank you.
So much easier. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, could you go back to the slide that has the matrix with PCI on one? Yeah, that one. The interpretation of the PCI scores seems different to me than what I've seen in MCI reports, and I was just curious about that.
Yeah, it is different, and they're subjective, and I think MTC is probably a reliable source because it's consistent across communities. I would guess this was probably taken from a prior version of that. This was provided to the city in 2015, and they used it as a good example to show the curve, to understand our strategy. If we were to do it again, I would probably change good to marginal or poor.
Yeah, they, they put, I think, 50 to, I'm not sure, we're at 59, I think, the last, the last report that I saw, and that was considered, we had dropped from fair to at risk.
Yes, that's right.
Whereas, when we look at this, we think we're solidly good, we're nine points above good. So I think we should, if we, if we accept PCI as a legitimate indicator for, for the quality of what, what we're doing, we should take a close look at that and figure out how we, how we interpret that to the public.
And I think that'll be part of going into the fall and reporting on a strategy, is identifying a target PCI and what that would cost the city to target that over a five or a 10-year period.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, Nick?
Yeah, you stated Washington is signage only, but currently there's sheros painted on Washington in that, in that stretch, I believe, correct?
So there, there's currently sheros out there. So when we do the repaving of it, we'll put the sheros back, but as part of this package, there would be no enhancements of the things that are already out there.
Got it, got it. That makes perfect sense. Okay, and then, could you speak to the signage for, as the mayor suggested, paid for by SB 1, and also patching of other areas? For example, at Solano and Key Route is some very bad pavement on Solano. What's the, how will that be taken care of?
So on the signage package, there, within the agencies, there's been some, I think Fremont has come up with a nice template that everyone's going to start using. So we're going to use that as a template, as well as the sidewalk project. We're talking about signs that can be put on the barricades with the no parking, so it's very clear that this is being funded by the sidewalk tax. So we'll, we'll work on that. Might take us a little bit to get it integrated, but we'll get it out there. With respect to potholing, some of these things, some of the areas that are out there are probably larger than what we can do with a traditional pothole. So one of the things that we've discussed, and we'll have to come back with more information, but to engage the contractor that's just starting on Evelyn and see what that person can do to do some temporary measures at Solano and Key Route and other places.
Okay, there's, there's a little bit of precedence for doing larger areas. Key, Masonic, rather, was repaired temporarily, more than temporarily, between Dartmouth and, I think Dartmouth and Solano, or Dartmouth and Marin. And I don't know how that was done, but that might be a template for you to look at for doing those bigger than a pothole, but smaller, smaller than a whatever type of repairs. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
5.4?
5.6.
Oh, 5.6.
I'm sorry, not 5.6, the paving.
Okay. Who's it, who is it? Okay, Francesco, would you like to come up and make a comment?
Can I get the previous graph there? Thank you. I live on the corner of Key Route and Washington, and I can attest to the abysmal condition of the pavement there and the extreme dangerous condition that, for anyone to bicycle. I won't bicycle on it. When I try to go to the city hall or to my office because it is unsafe, and I end up driving, riding on the, on the sidewalk if necessary. If I want to go down there to get to the only greenway, or I go down Solano Avenue, where I'm forced to kind of deal with cars, buses, and bulbults that push me into the road, and then cars honk at me because I'm having to take, get into the middle lane in order to not run into a bulbulb. By the, by this graph, that I think, if I understand, you said it was at 12% Washington, and that was from 2015. Well, three years later on this graph, if you follow the precipitous drop, you'll see it's probably at 1%, 2%, or 3%. And that is the state of that. And it needs an emergency repair this wintertime before the rainy season. And anyone who's contemplating not doing it, I would like you to go out there on your bicycle and investigate what it would be like riding on that condition, and then imagine it being night and it raining as well, and see if that's the kind of condition you want us to use and to endure on the single, extensive bike lane that rose east-west in the city of Albany. That is the bike lane, again, east-west for the city of Albany. You look at the plan, now can we go to the plan back there? So if, we're actually encouraging signing, showing people this is the way to go, which would be smart because it's safer than Solano, it's safer than Marin, and yet we have an extremely hazardous condition there that, I know we have a lot of new staff that's handling this, and I want you to appreciate the fact that we've been here for five years or more suffering under this. So our frustration is born from years of, oh yeah, we'll get to that. So I'm extremely pleased to hear that you are saying it's going to be completely fixed by next summer, but I do not see there a reason why we can't get a repairs, patches, pothole fixing before the rainy season. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers on this?
Good evening, Ed Fields. I wasn't going to speak on this, but since you've got it up there, I just wondered what happened to Kane's Avenue north of Solano, because it was in the design packet, but it got left off the project. it got left off the project.
You're correct. Keynes Avenue north of Solano was in the design package. The city of Berkeley approached us about three weeks ago with a project that they're proposing for this fall, which is a trunk sewer that goes down Portland Avenue. So, we're coordinating very carefully with them to make sure that we are not doing work in front of them where we can move that work backwards. So, Keynes Avenue, it will be one that will be tore up as an open-cut sewer project that the city of Berkeley will do. And so, at the end of that, they need to reconstruct the streak to our standards. And then, on top of that, we can assess and schedule the pavement rehabilitation at that point.
Thank you.
Just one more comment. I just want to appreciate the, getting the last of the ATP striping and signage projects in all of the package. As someone who's advocated for that, both on that side and this side of the dais, thank you very much.
Is that all for this particular item, 5-7? Okay, we're going to go back for just a minute. There's a member of the public pulling 5-4. Jeremiah, would you like to come up? Okay. Seeing nobody there. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. Hold the council, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. And now, we're going to go back to item 3-1. We have a certificate of recognition for Jennifer Raddix-Johnson. If you could meet me at the podium?
It is my pleasure to present this certificate of recognition to Albany resident Jennifer Raddix-Johnson for her selection as one of the Center for Nonprofit Management's inspiring leaders, being recognized for her effective leadership, measurable results, and inspiration in their organization or community. For the past six years, Jennifer has served as the executive director for the Alyssa Ann Rajburn Foundation, whose mission it is to significantly reduce the number of burn injuries through prevention education and to enhance the quality of life of those affected by burn injuries in California. The programs of the foundation have grown and thrived under Jennifer's leadership. It touches the lives of more than 2,100 burn survivors and their loved ones annually through its supportive programs like hospital visits, financial support, support group, and camps and recreational programs. More than 72,000 Californians were educated in 2017 through burn prevention messages. Under Jennifer's leadership and guidance, the Firefighters and Safety Education Program has expanded into communities throughout California, growing to reach more than 29,000 California students in 2017. In 2016, Jennifer started the California Burn Foundations Association, bringing together leaders from the 11 burn foundations throughout California to collaborate and work together to improve supportive services for those affected by burn injuries and increase burn prevention efforts throughout California. In addition, Jennifer's passion for burn prevention education has led her to be appointed as the American Burn Association's Burn Prevention Committee Chair. Another national committee Jennifer chairs is the Federation of Burn Foundations and Association of Burn Foundations throughout North America. On a local level, Jennifer was appointed as a fire commissioner for the Alameda County Fire Department in 2017. In her role as fire commissioner, she oversees the activities of the Alameda County Fire Department and ensures they are in alignment with the community needs. She completed the CERT training with the Albany Fire Department in 2017, and in her spare time, serves on the Albany Charter Review Committee. Please join me in congratulating Jennifer on her accomplishments and thanking, thank her for keeping us safe.
Thank you, Mayor McQuaid, and city council, as well as the Center for Nonprofit Management for recognizing my work in the community. I just hope that this really catapults the work that the Alyssa Ann Rajburn Foundation is doing in terms of supportive burn survivors throughout the state of California, as well as the important work that we do in burn prevention education. I think we were all affected by the wildfires last year in the North Bay, just in terms of our air quality, as well as housing those survivors and victims from the wildfires from our neighbors. But this happens every day, at all times, and touches all economic backgrounds. The Alyssa Ann Rajburn Foundation is here to support those who've been affected by burn injuries, but most importantly, to prevent any other more, any other injuries for any Californian regarding burn and fire safety. So, we are here as a resource. We actually moved from San Francisco to El Cerrito, so we're just a stone's throw away from Albany. But I'm proud to serve as the executive director and proud to be a resident here of Albany and continue to work to keep Californians safe. Thank you.
That brings us to good of the city. Good of the city is a time for persons desiring to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda. Please note, city policy limits each speaker to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. Could I please see a show of hands of how many wish to speak tonight? Okay.
I have two cards.
Okay, two cards, great. Come on up. Alan, come on up.
I noticed in the back of your agenda that you're informing the public that there's an election coming up, and the nomination period has started. We have an excellent city council, and I certainly hope to see when these council members are replaced, are replaced with very good Albany citizens as well. So, I'm just taking an opportunity to get this out to the public on the television. And I want to thank you for your service, and I hope you enjoy your well-deserved break in August. I think you still do that, don't you?
More or less.
And hopefully, when you get back, we can get some progress made on the affordable housing project, as well as acquiring a new social worker for Albany Community Resource Center. Again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Who's the other speaker?
Good evening, city council. Evening, Albany. My name is Jeremiah. Just want to say thank you for putting up the pedestrian signs on San Pablo. Really appreciate that. Now, it'll be safer for kids from Albany Hill to cross a state highway during rush hour or traffic commute hours. So, now they can cross safely because now there's a sign to let cars know. Really appreciate that. There's a lot of sign. I counted about 50. I lost count after the first 30 or 40. Anyway, the rest of my time, I don't know what's going on with how the city's spending money or hiring people, contracting out other people to do jobs for the city. I mean, I've got some parking tickets in Albany, and I had to call some company in Denver, Colorado. I know Oakland Police, they have a little kiosk, just a little machine, and they do parking tickets, just a little machine. You guys outsource a lot of stuff. Now, these crossing guards are going to be outsourced, and now, one of the most important resources, doesn't this place look great? Doesn't everything look so clean? It has been for the past five years. Unfortunately, someone from our city got fired with no notice from the city. They got a phone call from the new company to say that she lost her job. And it's a, it's a cleaning lady who comes in here and empties the trash. You guys are just going to throw her out like the trash. Makes me very sad. We're all human, and I don't know what cuts you guys are doing, hiring companies for the budget, for the bottom line, for the dollar. If you guys are doing things for the dollar, it's for the wrong reason. It should be for the people. You guys should be doing things for the right reasons, not for, about the money. That's greedy and selfish. Here we go, have a young lady in the back with a baby. Now, she lost her job. We have somebody cleaning the city hall right now. It's her first time working tonight. I talked to her in the hallway, she's nervous. She took her job. Hope you guys are proud of yourself. The person that took her job, she doesn't look as clean as this lady. Not about appearance, but this lady that you guys just hired, she used to clean for restaurants. This lady right here should be getting an award from the city for doing an excellent job for the past five years. This how you treat employees? Just to have it behind the scenes, just get cut, just thrown out like the trash? I'm sorry, I'm just very sad. That saddens me.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Sorry about my pronunciation. I am Rosa Mejia. I was, I was here for five years. We was working with Tonche Building Services. We lose our job like two weeks ago because Carla's company, they take our job. We are a singular mom. We have a kid. I have two kids, she have a four. We lose everything, benefits, money for pay, like food, rent, and everything. It is the reason we are here. So, sorry, we have to explain about our situation, like, we have to say here, like, in front of you guys. Maybe you guys know about, like, how we feel right now. Like, I don't know, she says something to you guys. So, thank you so much. I like your guys, like, here and think about, like, how we feel because we have, like, children, young children. It is the reason we work at a night time. We clean restroom, we clean everything, we doing vacuumed, and like, we need a benefits. This company, they doesn't offer benefits. They hire people just like giving them money. They don't pay like overtime. They didn't pay nothing. It is the reason they didn't offer job to us because we have a seniority with the other company. They liar, they send in like one letter to us, they say we are refused to get a job with them, but they didn't offer nothing to us. So, I don't know how that has to play, what about this situation we have right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jeremiah, I want to thank you. I would have never known about this, and I don't know if you knew about it. You probably didn't. We're a small town, and this is what's happening everywhere. I hope that you look into it and see if this practice is something that was, could have been anticipated, if it is something that you want to have happen, that you want to have happen in the future. I see around the city proclamations and statements of inclusion and caring about all kinds of things, and yet, it, this strikes, I don't know, I don't know what to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alfredo Lahud. I am a janitor. I am a member of SEIU USWW. I'm here to supporting my coworkers that they have this problem with a company that was hired for Albany. That company is not union company, and then, don't respect the laws in California as SB 20, that when some new company comes to get accounts for some places, the new company needs to offer the job to our coworkers, and this doesn't happen. For that reason, I'm here to support them and support the other coworkers for 1021 because there are workers like me that need to get the food and anything for the sons and daughters. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other speakers? Seeing none, we will move on. Councilmember reports on meetings attended and announcements of future meetings, city manager report. Does anybody want to report on what they've done?
Yeah, I could chime in. On July 9th, I attended the Programs and Projects Committee of the County Transportation Commission. There were updates on projects in Sunol, Newark, and Oakland. There was a long discussion about what was called a technical adjustment to the 2018 Comprehensive Investment Plan. The technical adjustment was about $105 million. We had all supposedly had allowed a number of incremental things to happen, and this was summing this up, but I guess a number of us were struck that $105 million doesn't seem in the technical category. On the 12th, I went to a meeting of the Recycling Board and Planning Committee that was held in Fremont. This included an expansion of a processing at ACI plant in San Leandro, changes in the board's rules of procedure, and a discussion of food service packaging. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Nick, do you have anything?
The only thing was the Wednesday mixer, the chamber mixer, that I think all three of us, Councilmember Barnes and Moss and myself, attended.
And that same evening, Mayor McQuaid and I were at the mayor's conference, including the homeless task force portion of that meeting. Let's see, on July 3rd, I attended the settlement conference in Lyons Club versus Albany, followed by a very festive barbecue at the Senior Center. They do a wonderful job. The following day, the, we had the Great Independence Day at Memorial Park, which I think everybody made it to at least some of that, I think. I spoke that weekend at the birthday celebration for the Dalai Lama, His Holiness, the Dalai Lama. Learned a lot, actually, about Albany's Tibetan community, which is a wonderful and thriving group in our town. I met with a school board member regarding ranked choice voting, and that, I think that does it for me.
Okay. I do have a report on the agenda from the League of California Cities that I went to a few weeks ago. Yesterday was the art opening at the Community Center Art Gallery. It's, you know, another wonderful show. If you are there, be sure and look at it. I participated in a conference call with climate mayors. And last week, I was really privileged to go to the District Attorney's Justice Academy where two Albany High School students had participated, John Mickey and Samantha Smithies, who is a member of our Sustainability Committee. And I also want to give a shout out to the Rec Department for their wonderful, as always, wonderful Fourth of July. I think- I think I heard it was the biggest one ever, and it was certainly well-attended. City manager report?
We've received information from the East Bay Regional Park District that they will have a groundbreaking event for the beach restoration project, which is scheduled for August 8th at 11:00 a.m. A flyer is forthcoming, and we will definitely post that to our website and through our e-news channels. I've also heard from the Board of Education that they may be scheduling a special meeting on July 20th from 12:00 to 3:00 at Cornell Elementary School to discuss the possibility of requesting a removal from the city charter. I'll follow up as I receive more information on that. I have not seen the agenda posted thus far. In terms of a repair update on our sidewalk project, which is funded by the parcel tax funds for sidewalk repair, we've completed 22 of the 40 locations in that first phase, and we're looking to continue the work with an additional 60 locations, with the interest in getting as many done as we can, as effectively and efficiently as possible. In addition, as Alan Maris informed us, the nomination period for candidates is now open. It opened today and closes on August 10th. Please check our website for continued updates as folks file, pull papers and file and qualify for candidacy. You make an appointment with our city clerk to obtain that paperwork. Also, please save the date for National Night Out. It will be our 13th annual event, so that's pretty significant. We already have over 20 block parties already signed up, so this is a well-loved community event that we hope you all can attend. And we are purchasing the water bottle filling stations as funded by Sugar Sweetened Beverage Tax Funds and anticipate installation of those in the early fall.
Thank you. That brings us to unfinished business, contract for school crossing guard services. May we have a staff report, please?
I'd like to welcome up Police Chief John Geisberger to provide you an update on this item. We'll be happy to follow up with any questions as well.
Good evening, council. At your June 4th... Oh, sorry. Apologize about that. At your June 4th, 2018 meeting, council directed staff to engage in discussions and negotiate as appropriate with all city management services to provide crossing guard services for the 2018-2019 school year. In preparations for these discussions, city staff notified Service Employees International Union, or SEIU, of the potential for contracting out crossing guard services and met with SEIU on two occasions over this issue. Staff is recommending that council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with all city management services to provide crossing guard services for the 2018-2019 school year in the amount not to exceed $124,076 for six crossing guards. Council, as you know, crossing guard program is in place to avoid accidents involving elementary schoolchildren as they travel to and from school across specified intersections near those schools. The city has been considering alternate funding of the crossing guard program since the loss of program revenue in June of 2017, when UC Berkeley prematurely withdrew from its agreement to participate in funding for the crossing guard program. On July 31st, 2017, council authorized interim funding necessary to fund the program through the end of the calendar year of 2017. Staff then negotiated a commitment from both UC Berkeley and Albany Unified School District to contribute one-time supplemental funds to continue the crossing guard program at full staffing through the end of the 2017-2018 school year, which ended on June 15th of 2018. During the 2017-2018 fiscal year, the crossing guard program faced significant difficulties providing coverage for absent crossing guards. In previous years, the city has relied on a group of substitute guards to address absences by regular guards. However, we currently don't have any substitutes that can actually cover a full day of crossings. Because the crossing guard program is housed in the police department, a sworn officer, a police services technician, park and enforcement officer, or a cadet have been used when possible to cover these crossing guard shortages. On May 29th, 2018, city staff notified SEIU that the city council was exploring the possibility of contracting out the crossing guard program to address the coverage issues identified. City staff met with SEIU and representatives of the crossing guards on June 19th and June 27th. SEIU expressed a desire that the crossing guard program remain in-house, but they had no proposals for how to address the coverage issues. City staff notified SEIU that the city council would need to address this issue at the July 16th city council meeting to have time to complete negotiations with all city management services before the start of the school year. At the June 18th, 2018 council meeting, the city council approved an update to the City of Albany operating budget for fiscal year 2018-2019, which included the Sugar Sweetened Beverage Tax Expenditure Plan for fiscal year 2018-2019, and this plan includes $124,076 for crossing guard services for the 2018-2019 school year. Under the proposed contract, all city management services will employ six crossing guards for elementary schoolchildren. Contract provisions will require all city management services to handle all aspects of the crossing guard program, from recruitment and hiring to supervision and management of the program. Current crossing guards that meet all city management services hiring guidelines will undergo orientation and training and be offered employment in order to capitalize on the local relationships, experience, and knowledge they each possess. Crossing guards will be paid a higher hourly rate than the city currently pays. All city management services has been determined to be a sole-source vendor under Albany City Council administrative policies, which allow service contracts for individuals or firms possessing a high degree of skill, and sole vendors are exempt from the bidding process. A service contractor or vendor may be considered sole-source for a variety of reasons, including but not limited to shipping costs, time consideration, service availability, or established expertise in the desired field. All city management services, management of the crossing guard program will provide benefits to the city, including a program that is professionally managed by a vendor with extensive experience, professional crossing guard training and certification, reduced liability risk, relief from personnel, and program administrative duties, and guaranteed coverage for all crossing sites without utilizing police personnel. All city management services will be solely responsible for staffing all crossing sites and backfilling shortages with all city management services-trained personnel. The terms of the agreement with all city management services requires the company to ensure identified intersections are staffed. In discussions with other jurisdictions that have used all city management services, they've been very satisfied with the services provided and indicated all city management services is good about covering for shortages. The proposed agreement between the city and all city management services is in the amount not to exceed $124,076 and will be funded with Sugar Sweetened Beverage Tax proceeds for the 2018-2019 school year. Council will be presented with an opportunity to review the program contract within one year to determine future funding sources and fiscal impacts.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll open it to public comment. Do you have speaker cards?
First three is Jeremiah Bryan Parsley and Julio Corral.
Good evening, city council. Good evening, Albany Police Department. Thank you for doing this. This is a very important topic. I did the math, $124,076 divided by six is $20,679.33, but then if you multiply that by six, it comes out to, if you multiply $20,679 times .33 cents times six, it comes out to the total of 124,075.98. So, what are you guys going to do with those extra two cents? If you guys are going to pay all these employees, the math doesn't divide evenly for six. Anyway, there's a lot that's not right about this. You guys are using money from soda tax. I mean, that's just kind of a scramble, trying to get some money. I mean, luckily, it wasn't, you know, a fund of money that was a specified fund. You guys kind of caught a loophole there that was, the soda taxes in a general fund. You guys kind of got lucky there. But, you know, that's not a long-term thing. I mean, I've been saying for about 10 years now, get crossing guards, get school zones in the municipal code, there's a state grant. I know you guys are having trouble finding it, but there's money out there. There's grants from the state for crossing guards. And, you know, the police have done a great job for years to hire crossing guards, and they've done a great job, and they really have. And now you guys want to outsource another job, like the young lady earlier tonight. Now what are these crossing guards supposed to do? At least they got notice, you know, that their jobs are being outsourced to another company. Now they get first pick if they want to keep their jobs. But, I mean, you guys are getting money from soda taxes, and now you're paying twice as much per crossing guard. I mean, the police station, you guys had police station running for half that, and now it's like double per crossing guard. I mean, it just, thank you, we need crossing guards, but at least it's going to be reviewed in a year. We'll get this going, I guess. I don't know how it works. I mean, they're city employees, and, you know, they had their five-year or 10-year, and they had retirement in Albany. Now they're losing their Albany employment status. Now they're, they get cut off, so what happens to their retirement? I don't know what else to say to this. I think we need more time. I wish I could pull this from the agenda to figure out some other way to pay for this, but you guys are going to do what you're going to do, but thank you for my comment.
Hello, my name is Julio Corral. I am the labor rep from SEIU 1021, and I represent the crossing guards. We were notified at the end of May that you were planning on contracting out these services. We have had a number of meetings. At our last meeting, we did ask for some information. We have since been provided that information. We've been informed that the cost of providing crossing guard services will increase by about 50% from the current costs. These are union positions, union jobs, and by contracting out these services, you're actually willing to incur about 50% of an increase. And we, the union, and I am here supported today by our union members, if you guys don't mind standing up really quickly, we, the union, are asking you, the city council, to take that same amount of money, that 50% increase, and use it to increase the wages. You guys can sit down, thank you. One of the major concerns is finding subs. There are no subs. One of the reasons there aren't any subs is because the wages haven't been raised in such a long time. A lot of the current crossing guards started as subs, and as positions became available, moved in to a regular crossing guard position. I understand that we haven't had an opportunity to hire subs, but I think with these additional monies, we more likely to be able to hire subs. So, we are asking you, the city council, today to not contract out these services and to agree to meet with us at least one more time to continue to have discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
It would be Rosa Mejia, Alfredo Lahud, and Lucena.
Good evening, mayor and council. Brian Parsley, Albany resident. First off, clearly, this is a very difficult situation. The fact remains that Mayor McQuade and Vice Mayor Nason worked very hard on this to come up with this plan, for lack of a better word. In the beginning, we saw crowds of crying children here about that blood was going to be on the highway, and there was going to be children run down because there's not going to be a crossing guard. This is the best plan that the city has. The university has pulled out, and they're not coming back. The school district has refused to assist with the city with this. So, the choices are, we can contract out, fund all six crossing guard spots, wherever that may be. I know we're going to be doing a study on that. But there's been currently a spot that's been vacant all year. That's not, that hasn't changed. The other spots that go unmanned due to illness or vacation or whatnot have to be staffed by a police officer who has to be pulled off the street three, four times a day for a half hour, 45 minutes to man that, or parking services officer, or a cadet, or an aide. You're not looking, also not looked at is the staff time that the police department has to put into this program, whereas this company simply takes that and is now in charge of it. I think as a union member myself, it's very difficult, but unfortunately, I'm also a resident here, and staffing out or contracting out a service which has not been provided to the residents at full staffing this year is what's called for. And getting kids to walk to school, getting kids to get exercise is an excellent source of funding from the Sugar Sweetened Soda Tax Fund. I think that, I think it goes to a funny adage where, I was talking to somebody about changing the motto of the city to "No deed goes unpunished," which is kind of where we're at right now. The choices are, if you hold off, you will not have the staffing for next year. And I think you'll run into problems with the special interest groups from the schools if that's not done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Can you read the names again?
I think they all.
Okay. Are there any other speakers? You had an opportunity. Seeing no one, I will bring it back to council for final comments. Anybody? We've talked a lot about this.
Yeah, I'd like to address the, what I think is a misperception that we're spending more than we were spending before. And you need to understand the difference between direct costs and programmatic costs and indirect costs. The numbers that you're referring to from the current and past programs are solely direct costs, and no cost was assigned programmatically for the large amount of work that was being done, and it seemed like an increasing amount of work over time by the police department. And public safety personnel in the police department are expensive and they're critical when they're being pulled off of other things to do crossing guard duty. I do believe that if we had done programmatic accounting on this program, we would probably find that we're actually saving, we're not saving money if you take into account the university funding that was pulled, but we lost that. We didn't have a choice about that. But the overall program, I believe, is not significantly more expensive and may actually be less expensive. This is not a situation where an employer is unhappy with a union, so it contracts out. That is not, and I don't think anybody who has been through these hearings would think that for a moment. We have been struggling mightily, and we struggled mightily to save the program at all. We have come this far from an original recommendation to simply do away with the program or cut it by 50%. So, I do want to say that, you know, the other is not on our agenda, the switch to the Carla's Janitorial, but, you know, we are constantly reviewing, we're constantly approving contracts. The staff comes to us and recommends, and we, unless anybody is telling us anything that we don't know, we... we don't know, we, you know, it's usually on our consent calendar. And if people have problems with something that we're doing, we need to hear about it at the time that we're considering the contract. After the contract has been approved, there's not really much of anything that can be done. And I would like, policy-wise, I would never support getting rid of union employees to contract out to save money. I don't think that that's a good way to go. But in situations where we're going from one contractor to another, we don't necessarily even know what their labor arrangements are.
We're getting a little far off the agenda.
Okay, I will stay away from the janitorial. But that's the story with the crossing guards. Thank you.
Nick?
I'll echo some of those comments, that we've considered this item carefully, and as was pointed out, we were without a full staffing this year, and having to have our police department do all the administration and training, and HR, and everything that comes with hiring a group of people and making sure that they're on the job, which is one of the most important things, and then getting the subs if they're not, is just a very difficult thing for a small city that's cash-strapped and with a very small staff. So I don't take lightly at all the loss of union jobs. I don't want that. One thing that we could do is to encourage the provider that we will probably be approving to turn their jobs into union jobs. I certainly would encourage them to do that. But we want to do the best thing for the kids and for our city, and we've discussed this a number of times, and we don't make this decision lightly.
Thank you. Anything else, Pete?
Sure, I'll throw my two cents into this. Yeah, I'll be voting for this tonight, but somewhat reluctantly because I don't think it is the ideal situation. One, I wasn't a big fan of where we're getting the money to do this. I think this was, to my mind, against the spirit of the sugar, the soda tax that we passed. It's just not so directly connected. But that discussion has been held, and I didn't went out on that. I'm not 100% sure that the police will never be out there again covering for this new contractor in a dire emergency situation, even though I know they're on the hook to kind of cover. But there will be, at some point, I would think, an emergency situation where they can't provide somebody fast enough, and it's still going to fall back to the police to make sure that the streets are safe for kids to cross. And it may be better than what we have now, but I don't think it's the total silver bullet that will forever protect us from using our police to be crossing guards in some emergency And, you know, as was said by others, I don't like this idea that we're taking jobs away from union workers and giving them to a private contractor. What I would say is, is private contractors in a lot of cities, and I would go after them. I mean, there are a lot of good union jobs that are always in the public sector now, but I think more of them need to be in the private sector as well as the public sector. And I would hope that if the SEIU gets it together, they can start going after a larger contractor that's got workers in a number of cities. But, again, that's a bit off-topic for what we're doing here. I do like that we're going to be reviewing this in a year and seeing how well it works. And perhaps we can come up with more creative ideas of how to cover this, how to get Albany citizens involved in some kind of ongoing way that will always have enough crossing guards. But I think, given the timing and the need to have these crossing guards by the schools, I think this is our best alternative this evening.
Michael, do you have any final comments?
I think we've said over the last two years, just about all there is to be said on this, I think it is the best choice right now, and I will entertain a motion to move this forward.
I would move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Hold the council, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to 10-2, calling for general municipal election and requesting consolidation with the statewide general election. May we have a staff report, please? Where is he?
Good evening. The item before you is to discuss the upcoming general municipal election, to request consolidation with the statewide general election, and the administration of the election by the county registrar of voters. There are three ballot measures that are proposed. The extension of the half-cent sales tax, special parcel tax to replace the existing Measure R tax to fund the maintenance and improvements of parks and open space, and charter amendment to transition city treasurer position from elected to appointed. And also, tonight, it is recommended that the council formally identify subcommittees of the council to prepare the argument in support of the ballot measures. The council has the option of assigning up to three different subcommittees to author the arguments for the three different ballot measures, or just one subcommittee to author all the arguments.
I'd also like to add some clarification or follow-up from our last discussion on the parcel tax item, the item to replace the LLAD 96-1 Measure R funds. You'll see in your staff report on page three that we've provided two tables. The first is a table pulled out of the LLAD 96-1 assessment structure, which council adopted in June. You'll see the annual assessments in the right-hand column. And in terms of the terminology in that annual assessment column, you see building area and land area are the factors of multiplication in the bottom categories there. This matches most closely with Option C, which was presented to the council as part of your four options during our discussion at your last meeting. This provides the same single-family residential rate of $69, and you'll see that the rest of the rates mirror fairly closely with the LLAD. Certainly, there is a bit of discrepancy because they are not apple-to-apple comparison, and they just aren't, because one is a parcel tax and one was an assessment based on specific usage of the property. In addition, as attachment two to your staff report this evening, the other tax funding options are included, should the council wish to switch out the option. However, the information I received from the council at the last meeting was a general consensus to, again, replace the existing tax with something very similar in structure, and that would be Option C, as presented in the staff report and in the accompanying ordinance.
Are there any questions from council?
On the structure of the subcommittees, the subcommittees would have to be maximum of two people?
Correct.
We'd either go with one?
Two council members.
Two council members, okay. Two council members, perhaps one subcommittee of two council members, or up to three subcommittees of two council members each?
Correct.
We're sure that works with the Brown Act, because there'd be a lot of overlap. I don't know if that's something we need to look at or not.
Craig, would you like to weigh in?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Well, if we're thinking about ballot language, there's three ballots. If there are subcommittees of two each, that would be a total of six, perhaps, unique individuals, which we don't have, so there'd have to be some duplication among council members. Or we could just go with one, and one subcommittee of two that would handle all of them.
Yeah, I think you could have multiple subcommittees assigned to individual ballot measures, if that's what the council would like to do.
Could we do that part last? Could we focus on what we're going to put on the ballot before we talk about how we're going to put it on? Are there any questions from council on the actual ballot language or ballot measures?
A couple of points of clarification in the ordinances as posted. There are two amendments that staff worked through this afternoon. One is on page 15 of, I'm not sure that that's actually.
Page 15.
15. Exhibit B, page 15. The last paragraph, basically, is to reference that this is an ongoing tax. Also, in terms of the charter amendment regarding the city treasurer, you'll see that the date has actually been changed to December 10, 2020. This is to anticipate the actual certification of election by the registrar of voters' office, the registrar themselves, who, their last possible date to do that is December 6.
December 6.
And so we're planning for a special council meeting on December 10, a typical process. But we're putting that explicitly in the charter language amendment so that it's clarified.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from council? Okay, are there any? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, bring it back to council for final comments. So are we all in agreement that we're going with Option C as written? That seems to be the only one that we had any questions about.
I guess, my only question would be, with regard to the condos and townhouses and multifamily residential, it's going up from $51.75 a unit to $52 a unit. Is there a reason that it has to be that round number? Or is there a reason it can't be left at the existing amount? Since our goal is to, the message of this is, we're simply continuing the tax structure that already exists to the greatest extent possible.
Sure. I'm sure that can happen. Our NBS consulting rounds up.
Yep.
We can certainly make that straightforward.
Good. Well, if we're in agreement, I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay, why don't you make a motion for number one, and then we'll come back to number two.
Okay. So the motion, this is Resolution 2, 2018-98. I'm a little confused. When you say number one, and we'll come back to number two, are you saying?
I was thinking that how we just determine the subcommittee or subcommittees would be a separate item.
Why don't we, oh, yeah, the subcommittees would be a separate item. I thought you might be saying I should do the parcel tax, and then we'd come back to the sales tax.
No, no. I think the ballot arguments can all go together, just how we do it separately.
Okay, then the resolution, I guess it's just that resolution, then Resolution Number 2, 2018-98, I will move that.
Are you amending it for 51.75 instead of 52?
Well, I'm taking it as, given that this is a rounding up, but yes, I'd like that to be part of it.
Okay.
So we're going to put it back to the, we'll put in the specific amount, which will be 51.75, not 52.
And does the motion include the two clarifying changes requested by staff?
Yes, with the clarifying changes that were circulated to us today.
I will second that motion.
Hold the council, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. Okay, so now we need to figure out how we're going to prepare the written arguments for these. I believe what we've done in the past is to have subcommittees, two people each, working on them. That seems to make sense to me, I don't know what the feeling of the rest of the council is.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to be on a subcommittee that is doing all three. I'll put it that way. I do have interest in the parks, in being on a subcommittee for the parks parcel tax.
I would be interested in that as well.
Okay, hang on just a sec. Let's do the sales. Okay.
Can we give some clarification, just what exactly we're going to be doing? We're not attorneys, so we're not going to be writing the language ourselves, obviously. Craig?
Writing the pro ballot arguments and, if necessary, rebuttal argument.
As we've done before. Okay, so for right now, Nick and Rochelle are interested in the parks?
And I'm interested also in the treasurer, if I'm needed, if you need that sixth person, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Pete, what are you interested in?
I'm flexible, you know, when it put me in where you need me.
Michael, do you have a preference?
The sales tax.
Okay. I think I'd like to do the treasurer, and so why don't you do the sales tax?
The treasurer?
I'll do the treasurer, or you do the sales tax?
Oh, okay.
Does that work for you? I can do it the other way.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
So... You know, you could do this as a Venn diagram with the five of us sitting up here. We've got sales tax, treasurer, and parks.
Well, one person's got to be on both.
Rochelle?
That would be me.
Rochelle's on two.
Then we're good.
Okay, so, do you want a motion? Okay. So it seems like it's parks is Nick and Rochelle, treasure is Rochelle and myself, and sales is Michael and Pete. So would someone like to make that motion?
So move those subcommittees.
A second.
Hold the council, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries.
What's the timeline on getting these arguments done?
It's August 17. Sorry.
Actually, in your packet, you'll see the instructions for submittal of the arguments. It's, what attachment is this?
It's attachment two.
Second-to-last attachment. So you'll see the deadlines for filing arguments and rebuttals included.
So the primary argument is August 17 by 12 noon, and the deadline for rebuttal will be Friday, August 24 by 12 noon.
And just a reminder, there are subcommittees drafting the actual argument language. However, you still have the signatory lines, so you can think about who the signatories are for each of these arguments as well.
Great, okay. Is there anything else we need to know about this or do about this? Okay. That brings us to other business, any future agenda items anyone wants to add? Excuse me. The next city council meeting is not until Tuesday, September 4, so everybody enjoy your break. And tonight, we are adjourning in memory of Barbara Harmio, and Rochelle has a few words to say about her.
Yeah, for many people involved in the...
That brings us to other business. Any future agenda items anyone wants to add?
We can do it.
Excuse me. The next city council meeting is not until Tuesday, September 4, so everybody enjoy your break. And tonight, we are adjourning in memory of Barbara Harmio, and Rochelle has a few words to say about her.
Yeah, for many people involved in the Albany schools, Barbara Harmio was a, really a foundation stone of our community. She moved to Albany in the late 1950s, raised her three children here. Her activities in Albany were really quite remarkable. She was a PTA leader, she was a Cub Scout den mother, a Little League coach subbing for her husband. She was the administrative assistant to the principal at Cornell Elementary and also at Albany Middle School. She took pride in being the official scorekeeper for the Albany High School Cougars baseball team and was known for participating in local celebrations of all kinds. And I think that it's important to note, she, in addition to being the mom to her three kids, she was like a second mom to a lot of people who needed one at one or another time in their life and was very much beloved.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.